All right, welcome to the April 10th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. If you'll bow with me, I have, speaking really loud here, I have the prayer and the pledge. Father, thank you for this day, this chance that we gather to work for the citizens of Murfreesboro. Lord, I thank you for those things that are spoken and unspoken. I thank you for what's happening in our community. Lord, thank you for the opportunities that we have in our community. We ask you to bless all of those that work here. Lord, be with our emergency service providers and our employees on the front line every single day. We love and we praise you. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone. Do we have any public comment? We had a big morning. At 7:30 this morning, there were people literally wrapped around the building at the grand opening for Trader Joe's on the corner of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. So TDK put together a good project that had gone through Planning Commission, Council, and the funny thing is you see all those people, and I think we all agreed, we were like, man, we just want to cut the ribbon because there's a lot of sales tax that's going to be spent in this organization today. But it's the biggest Trader Joe's that they had said it's the biggest Trader Joe's that's been built in Tennessee, and it looks like it's going to be a hit. So thank you to everybody who worked very hard on that. All right, we'll move to action items. You have ordinance 23030 amending city code, chapter four, alcoholic beverages. This is second and final reading.
Motion to second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gelsares?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have MFRD, mobile data terminal upgrades, IT. Mr. Jarrett.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This item is for the replacement of mobile data terminals used by Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue. We're purchasing 30 ruggedized Panasonic toughbooks with vehicle docks and accidental damage coverage. These MDTs are essential for dispatch, communication, mapping, and incident reporting in the field. The total cost is approximately $144,000 and is funded from the FY25 CIP. The purchases through the Omnia Partners contract to ensure competitive pricing. The staff recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to second.
Motion to second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gelsares?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, thank you, Matt. All right, let's move to item three, Resolution 25R12, supporting the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board. Ms. Barrett, Donna Barrett's here to present that to us.
I'll present.
We have two members of the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board that are here.
I'll be brief, and Mrs. Barrett may want to fill it in, fill in comments based on the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board's perspective. But in essence, this resolution for you expresses support for the Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Planning Board and its efforts to manage solid waste effectively in the region, emphasizing the need for compliance with established flow control measures. So this would basically endorse the Central Tennessee Region Board's actions to restrict landfill access to waste generated only within Central Tennessee region. That includes Cannon, Coffey, Rutherford, and Warren counties. There is the legal framework that Adams worked on, on the Tennessee Solid Waste Management Act, and Ospere has worked quite extensively as well. But this does empower regional boards to manage waste flow and restrict access to landfills based on geographic criteria. And the regional board's resolution to limit waste from outside the region was approved and has not been legally challenged. Again, it also has a call for enforcement, where we urge the TDEC and the Solid Waste Disposal Control Board to enforce the flow control measures established by the Central Region Board to protect the public health and the environment. So with that, Ms. Barrett, if you have additional comments.
Thank you. Council members, thank you so much for your time today. I want to start off by thanking you for all the help that this body and the City of Murfreesboro gave to the Regional Board when we were faced with the lawsuit over the landfill expansion. City of Murfreesboro stepped up and was a great partner for us in that, and we very much appreciated that. We made the strides that we did, and we're successful both in the original lawsuit and then with the appeal also, in large part because of the efforts that were given to us through legal counsel and through the city. So thank you all for that. We are now in the next phase of what we can do to better control our landfill and the solid waste as we plan for the future with diversion and recycling. And this resolution will be part of a larger packet that accompanies the resolution that the solid waste, the Central Board has proposed, as well as the county, Rutherford County has proposed, in asking TDEC to enforce their, enforce the flow control that we put into place two and a half years ago that was meant to go into effect on January 1 of 2023, and as of today has not been implemented or adhered to. The enforcement mechanism is TDEC, not our board. We have the authority to implement the control but not enforce it. So we're asking for that, and the support from this body will add to that with our General Assembly members. And with that, there's 30 years' worth of history behind this. I will stand for questions and answer what you'd like me to answer.
Any questions for Donna?
Donna, I just want to publicly thank you. I know we've worked on this for three or four years now, as you've represented Rutherford County and Murfreesboro at the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board with Darren and Joe Whitefield.
And Bishop.
And Bishop Wagner, also, that represents the county. So you've been steadfast on everything that you've done, and your research is impeccable. So thank you for, publicly, thank you for working so hard on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Donna, can you offer, go ahead, Bill.
My only question was, who are we presenting this to? Is it TDEC, or is it the legislature?
It's the General Assembly, the legislature. And as note, they're quickly trying to get out of session, so this is a very timely piece. Not to say we haven't had ongoing discussions with the General Assembly members, I just want to capitalize on what's remaining of the time that they're in session.
I got you. And I think it is appropriate to say that our General Assembly members, our delegation has, have been very supportive of the process and also even the resolution. TDEC has been a different, probably, opinion, but that's not to say this resolution's basically saying the statutory obligation that the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board has been granted by the Assembly and that we're asking them to adhere to that.
Can you, I guess, just educate for the people out there watching, the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board, when y'all developed this, this is just a majority of people from Rutherford County. This is multiple counties with multiple people that developed this unanimously. Can you comment on that?
I can. And to give you a little more history to back up, it's the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board. From here on forward, I'm going to call that the Board. I've repeated it way too many times, and I'm sure I will get it in reverse order. We were created statutorily in, under the 1991 Solid Waste Act in state law. They created regional boards throughout the state of Tennessee. We're not the only one, and the recommendation when they created them was that they be multi-county. Ours is four counties, Rutherford, Coffey, Cannon, and Warren. There are some that are individual county, regional districts. There are seven of us now that are multi-county regions. And statutorily, we have several things we can do. First is the landfill and whether or not we, expansions, whether or not landfills are allowed and/or expanded. So that was one of our statutory obligations, duties that we have. The second one is flow control, meaning we can limit the flow of solid waste that comes into any public or private landfill in our region to just the flow from those four counties, or the counties in the region. And that's what this does. And to answer your question, so we do further, this passed unanimously by my board, and we have, again, we're representatives from all four counties on the board, and all of them have pledged their support with their delegation as well to help us on this. We are the largest county in the delegation, but they do understand that as Rutherford County goes, so go they. And it is our strength and our efforts in diversion and recycling that will help them as well benefit. So we are a team together on that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask one more thing.
Yes, sir.
What would be a positive response? What, I mean, succinctly, you get into legalese when you're drawing these resolutions up, but what would be a positive response to this resolution? What would we consider a positive response to our resolution?
All garbage that is not generated in Rutherford, Coffey, Cannon, or Warren stops coming into Middle Point landfill immediately.
Which is about 70% of the amount of trash that comes in.
Seventy-two percent, to be exact.
Thank you for the work that you put into this and what our legal teams put into this, and it's neat to see entities working together, you know, for the betterment of our citizens. And I appreciate the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Great work.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gelsares?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, members, so very much.
All right, let's move. We have Dr. Duke that is coming to talk about our city schools' budget preview. Trey, I thought you would have him play like a walk-up music for you or something.
No, I wanted to. That was part of the plan, but Aaron told me no. So, thanks for giving me a few minutes today. We are, as you guys are preparing, well into our budget process, and really wanted to give the board a little bit of a preview, the city council a preview of what our board is working on from a really high level. Starting with our enrollment projections for next year, we are looking to grow about 228 students based on our enrollment, which is about a 1.27% increase from where we are this year. What's been interesting is we look historically, our growth has really fluctuated over the past six years, mainly because of, realistically, COVID. We had some real ups and down peaks with COVID, where one year we grew almost 6%, one year we went backwards. So when you look on average, it's about a 0.72% growth. Now, I will say some of that is moves we've made in the city school system with some consolidation of our sixth-grade classes that has kind of aided in that movement. So overall, if you take out those COVID bumps, we're looking at almost a 1.5% growth every year. So that's what we're planning on, obviously, because student numbers is what brings us our revenue as we think about it. One piece of new information I did want to share that just came out about two weeks ago, which goes to what we call our weighted full-time equivalency. And what this is, is this is information that shows of all K-12 public school students in Rutherford County, what percentage are being served by the city schools. And as you can see, this year, we are at the highest we've been since 21, or 2021. We're, now we're right at that 15% mark. 14.94% of the overall student population is being served in our city school system. So we're seeing that has grown the last two years. Why is that important? Because that's what's determining our proportion of sales tax and property tax that we receive. Again, we receive that amount exactly. So we serve 14.94%, we receive 14.9%, 4% of sales tax and property tax, which of course, isn't just for the future, it is actually corrected for that year. So even though that number just came out, they'll make some adjustments to make sure it's that year-for-year accountability. So in summary of this portion, again, our enrollment has really fluctuated over the past six years. With that annual average increase we're seeing, we are serving a higher percentage of students. But we also are aware that enrollment is becoming a little more tricky to project. We talked about this at the city council retreat back in the fall with the increase in charter schools, now the passage of school vouchers. We have strong private schools in our city. It is a little harder for us to project enrollment, which is why we feel really good about that 1.27, but of course, it is a projection. What I really wanted to give the council a sneak peek preview of is what I spoke with Mr. Gore and Ms. Tucker about, which is our revenue projections into this year. We really, just to remind the council, we have a few main sources of revenue, those state funds that come directly from the Department of Education, county property tax, county sales tax, which is based on that 14.94%, and then the City of Murfreesboro's support as well. When we are looking at our projections for next year from the state revenue, which is our highest funding source, we're looking at about a $2.1 million increase in state funds. That is tied to the TISA formula, tied to the students we serve and the needs of those students. So we are anticipating and planning for and budgeting about a $2.1 million increase in state revenues. One of the things we've talked about for several years now, and we've been watching, that we are really feeling the impact of this year, is the county property tax. As I mentioned, that comes to us, it was, when I started this position, our second largest revenue stream, which is good, property tax is consistent, it's stable. That is no longer the case. If you, just a quick history lesson, if you go back to FY20, our revenue from property tax is about 15.2 million. You can see it kind of stayed stagnant. That was in that COVID time when our enrollment was fluctuating. And then in FY22, we received 16.2 million in property tax. In FY23, you may remember that the county commission moved pennies from the education fund, that is, the shared penny between Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County schools, based on that percentage of students we serve. They moved seven pennies from the education line to the educational capital projects, which means it now is a non-shared penny, and it is for Rutherford County schools. That impact that year had about a 1.2, when all was said and done, about a $1.28 million deficit that we saw. The next year, the trend continued, and 10 more pennies were moved away. You can see the, our revenues went down to 13.3 million, the decrease of 2.9. And I point to that decrease not from the previous year, but from that FY22 year before pennies started being moved. So now we're seeing a multiple million dollar decrease year over year. This year, two more pennies were moved, so now we're at a total of 19 pennies that have been moved. And you can see our estimate right now is about 13.3, which is another $2.9 million loss in our operational budget. I will say that 13.3 accounts for the increase of the weighted average that moved to 14.94. So our student accounts, that's been calculated in here, and we're still looking at another $2.9 million loss. So overall, the movement of the pennies, what have they cost us in the last three years? $7 million. And that is assuming that there has been no increase in the property tax. That would be if Rutherford County property tax stayed stable, and that there was no increase to it, that's what we would have lost.
Real quick, though, when you say increase in property tax, you're talking about either assessment value or new things being added to the property tax rolls?
Yes, sir.
The growth.
Talking about if, basically in '22 or '23, that there were no new buildings, no new houses, that growth just 100% stopped?
That's right.
So that number's probably higher than 7 million, isn't it?
I calculated it, if we had a 2% growth, it would have been, that would be over $9 million. So we're knocking on that $10 million that we're looking. The difference when we think about this year is, of course, we've had COVID dollars, we've had, that's really kind of helped us as we've gone through this last couple of years to kind of make up that difference. We had, we were able, prior to the movement of the pennies, really budget our sales tax very conservatively, and that helped. We are not in a position where we can do that as much right now. And so again, now we're looking at a situation where our local property tax revenue has gone from our second highest revenue source to our third highest revenue source. I point this out just as a comparison. So in a nutshell, we're looking at $2.1 million in more revenue from the state with a year-over-year loss of about $2.9 million a year. So that's about an 800,000 difference. When we think about rising costs, thinking about trying to make sure our employees are compensated at the appropriate range, this is something that this year specifically, we are really dealing with at the school level. So those impacts, what we've already done, looking at some reductions in personnel needs specifically around new positions, really having some pretty intense conversations around non-personnel expenses where they're not essentially required. We're looking at really a pretty modest cost of living adjustment around 2%. That is about $2.1 million for us, which is, in essence, every bit of the new state money we received. So that, all of that money will go to helping compensate our employees not to account for the additional cost and prices and other non-personnel issues that we may have. At the end of the day, our increases in expenditures continue to outpace those revenues, and we don't have that COVID safety net with those ESSOR dollars that we had in the past. I do like to talk about this because one of the things we've worked really hard in the city schools the last four years is to address our fund balance. And you can see we've made some really great growth, in large part because of how we use those ESSOR dollars and how we continue to control expenditures despite that influx of money. What we are looking at right now is with the kind of first draft, and we're still on the first draft with our school board, of our budget is, because of this impact, we could look at, if our budget goes as anticipated, that fund balance going from 17% to about 13% in one year, because we're going to have to make up that deficit from that loss of property tax money. I put 10% up there because that's kind of our board goal. Our goal as a board is to keep a 10% fund balance, mainly because of the age of our buildings. The average school in Murfreesboro City is 41 years old. So there's a lot of maintenance needs there that we have to be prepared to handle if there's an emergency that comes up that we haven't planned for in going there. So obviously, you can see from a long-term trajectory issue, this is something we're watching very closely. So to kind of summarize, as we go through this, we've now had three consistent years of pennies being moved from the shared portion to the unshared portion in the county property tax. That's about $2.9 million annually. We are feeling that. That loss in property tax is larger than the increase in our state funds. We know that recurring and one-time personnel expenses and non-personal expenses continue to rise. We all know that $100 today does not buy what $100 bought two years ago. And we know that we're going to have to find some additional sources of revenue or continue to cut our expenses, our expenditures pretty dramatically because of these decreases in property tax.
Where would those cuts you're talking about come from? I know all the cuts are going to hurt, but where will you start cutting?
So some of the first things we've looked at is really removing any kind of slack or slippage that may be in our budget from, we budget at 100%, of course, having our positions filled, or do we, is that where we're seeing some savings? We can kind of scale some of that back. We've looked really closely at all of our programs. I mean, we are evaluating every program. There's several one-time expenses that we were hoping to get done this year that we have pushed off, and we said we're going to wait on those. Several growth positions that we need, some new positions that we're pausing, we're waiting on. And we're actually looking at our classroom and our PTR numbers to see, do we have room there to maybe not fill as many positions as we've filled in the past. So really, we're looking at everything.
And did we, did we cut some sports? Did we cut out basketball in the city schools?
Yes, we did run a kind of a junior pro basketball league. We are no longer running that program.
What about ESP?
So ESP is completely self-funded.
So it's revenue neutral?
It's revenue neutral. Ms. Hopkins, our ESP coordinator, does a fantastic job. So that is completely self-funded. So this is really, you know, and when you, the board, the council's aware, when you approve the budget, you approve our federal budget, our ESP budget, school nutrition. We're really talking about our operational and our general purpose budget, where we are just, this year continues to be the year where I feel like the last four years have kind of met the road. And we have a plan for this year. And, you know, we have, it's going to be a tight budget, we know that. We're really continuing to evaluate what the long-term impact of what does this look like next year, and what is it year, the year after, especially if the pennies continue to be moved.
Right now, what is the teacher-to-student ratio?
We're sitting at, right at 1 to 20. 1 to 19, around that area. It fluctuates, obviously, from school to school, but we're within state ratio.
That sounds good, because sometimes teachers get overloaded, you know, with so many students. Yeah.
Trey, I want to talk about the elephant in the room. It's the shared pennies. And this is not a negative towards the county, because the county is in a, is a, is the same situation we're in. But, you know, I do think it's, this is not money that the county is just giving us. I mean, this is money that follows the student, because we educate more around up to 15%. 15% of the kids that are in our classrooms are county residents, because the last time I checked, I'm paying city, I'm paying city and county taxes on commercial property and residential property. So I'm trying to understand, I think this goes back to a former finance director, Doug Botery is the guy's name, and then going back to Director Spurlock. What was the rationale in starting to move these pennies around?
You know, I can't speak to rationale as much as I can speak to what was publicly said. And so there was a public comment that was made specifically around, the first year it was moved, if we move this, and I'm sure moved to handle expense concerns they had, that it would prevent, it would prevent them from having to send, at that point, they estimated about $1.5 million to the city schools. But I think you bring up a really valid point, which is, all of our city school families are paying county property tax that's going into that education fund, and also going into the educational capital project fund. And if they're a city school family, they only have access to one of those pots of money right now. And so when that money begins to be moved from a shared penny to a non-shared penny, it really is decreasing the amount that we then have access to. And as you can see, it's, those 19 pennies have had a drastic impact on our budget. But we, as you said, we only receive the money for the students we are serving instead of the county having to serve those students.
But I think it's important to point out, for example, when we build a school, or we fund a school, the citizens of Murfreesboro are the ones who pay for that. And when I say that... And when I say that, no one outside of our corporate city limits that lives in the county funds those students. That is just the city of Murfreesboro. So in our property tax, if that, if that penny is not shared, then there's the argument that the citizen of Murfreesboro is being double taxed to pay for two school systems. I mean, we already are. I mean, we don't split it up past seven through twelve. But I'm, what's the best feedback or what, I mean, what do you need from the council? We've had these discussions.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, now it's getting to the point where you look at nineteen cents over a three-year, four-year period. I mean, if this content, I mean, can this continue happening? Or what, what does this do into the county school system? Because I, I mean, I think Dr. Sullivan has also been very upfront, saying they're not in support of any more pennies being moved, because this hurts the county school system as well, correct?
Yeah, it does. I think the difference is, and it does hurt them, and it hurts that operational budget. The, the place where I think it's a little different is the impact it's having on us because they are, in essence, increasing the amount of money in their capital projects account or in that line. So they are increasing there by taking the money that we were using for our operational money. So it is impacting, I think, their overall operational budget. The impact is significantly more on us, because we are losing all of that revenue, where they still have access to that revenue, but perhaps using it in a different way. The, there is still the requirement for maintenance of effort, where they have to continue to budget at the same rate as the previous year. I am not aware of how many more pennies they can move until they are at the point where they can't meet maintenance of effort anymore. But that would, I would think, be the point where they would have to stop.
Okay.
Is the percentage pretty high or low for the students that leave the MCS schools and go to a charter or private school that want to come back?
This year, we lost right at three hundred students to Rutherford Collegiate Prep, and as of this week, we've re-enrolled a hundred and forty-six of them.
But does that revenue, I know it follows the student, but we still lose the revenue on those students, right?
Well, what we're specifically talking about is, is our property and sales tax. And so that is going to be calculated from that weighted full-time equivalency, which is based on who we actually are serving in our building. So yes, because that's calculated at the beginning of the year, if they were to come back in November or December, they would not have been included in that, in that calculation.
Dr. Duke, can you, I guess, shed some historical light on how this is allowed to happen? Because I'm sure there has to be something in state law that says they can do it. They just probably didn't decide to act upon it until an unelected school finance director on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-second, and about the hour mark, go look it up on their health and ed committee, came up with this idea. So can you kind of give us, I guess, a historical timeline? I'm sure there's been a law in place, but the county didn't act upon it until that point in time. And then I've got a couple of other comments.
Yeah, so the law went into effect, I believe, in 2013 that allowed this to be set up to help, really, the intent of it was to be able to purchase one-time expenditures without it impacting and raising the maintenance of effort. Like, that was the intent. Ms. Bush is here, I know she's done a lot more research, is there anything you want to add to that, Lauren? But she's looked at this pretty closely for us, but that was the intent. So they are within their legal, they, they have the legal right to do it, and that's something our board's been talking about, of course, for, for years, is there's not a whole lot of leeway, we have to stop it, except to make sure they understand the impact it's having and the benefit the county also receives by having a second school system, because, as Mayor McFarland said, the prices that the, the city is picking up, that they're not having to find.
So a one-time event? Because when I went back and watched that video, I think they were talking about need for a chiller or a cooler or a roof at one of the high schools. That's what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But since then, they've continued to, here's a couple more pennies, here's a couple more pennies. Now, the question I've got for you, for me, in the simplest of terms, I'll go back in time. I've still got little kids, kids in elementary school, kids in middle school, kids in high school. So I've got a kid at Black Fox Elementary, which is where my kids went. I've got a kid at Whitworth Buchanan County School, and I've got a kid at Riverdale High School. I'm like the mayor, I'm paying city taxes and county taxes. Compare that to, say, a taxpayer in Smyrna or Laverne that's just going to a Rutherford County school. Educate us on how it's, I'm being double taxed or being unfairly treated, or my tax dollars, or really, I'm not getting my bang for the buck.
So probably the easiest way, if you say you have three students and you're in both of the districts, and the Laverne or Smyrna resident has three students, you got six students.
Yeah.
Two families paying in to the property tax at the same rate.
Yep.
The family in Laverne and Smyrna, those students are benefiting from the money they put in, regardless of which pot it goes into, the educational, the educational capital projects, they're giving that. Your family that has the student at Black Fox, only two of your students are getting access to the educational capital projects fund. Your student that goes to Black Fox, although you're paying the same amount, where they're paying for three students, you're really paying for three, but only getting the benefit for two of them, if that helps. So you do have that student, we have ninety-four hundred families that are paying that, they're paying the same rate, and they are putting money into that account and not getting that benefit from that account.
So nine thousand families that have kids in Rutherford, excuse me, Murfreesboro City Schools, that are paying city taxes and county taxes, and they're not getting the bang for their buck. And there's ten or eleven county commissioners, Phillips, Harris, Dodd, Sereno, McAdoo, Irvin, McMurray, Johnson, Gooch, and Kush, that last time I checked, based upon their maps, their constituents are also city taxpayers. And so this is an issue where, I'll just go ahead and say it, they're robbing the citizens of Murfreesboro to help take care of an issue in the county. And I get it, they've got issues, they've got funding issues. But it's, it's putting the pressure on us as a city to make some tough choices. I guess I don't appreciate that, because last time I checked, and help me out with this, Darren, they just came to us and said, hey, we need sewer for this Beatty property. And we're giving them access to the sewer, because those students, probably some of them, you know, they're city, maybe some county, but they're still students, they deserve a good education. But if we had said, no, sorry, we're not giving you sewer, go get twenty or thirty more acres for a step system at seventy-five thousand dollars an acre, that's a couple of million dollars, county taxpayers would have had to pony up, correct?
Correct.
Got it. So I'm all about being a good neighbor and helping our brothers and sisters over on the county side, but this has got to stop.
Yeah.
It's, it's got to stop. Sean?
Yeah, I brought it up last year, and you had several county school board members talking about the money that the charter schools were taking from them. And I go, what about the money you're taking from us? And they had no answer for it whatsoever. They go, well, that, that's not equivalent. I go, you guys are taking three million dollars out of our school's budget that hurts our students. Why can you complain about it, but you're not saying it's a problem for you to do it to us?
My question is, what can we do to wake them up? Get their, get their attention? Because when I paid my taxes this time, I was not happy. I mean, real not happy. In fact, I was in a bad mood all week.
Well, next week's April the fifteenth, so we can all be in a bad way next week.
Do we need to petition our state legislators to just close this loophole?
And I think that's something we can have a conversation about. I have, I asked Ms. Bush to continue to look at, are there anything that we've missed in the past? At the end of the day, you know, I, I understand we all have needs, and in a growing community like ours, we're all going to have needs. But if, to, to, to operate a school system of the size that we have, and the caliber of school system we have, having a consistent decrease in revenues is, just becomes where it's unmanageable without some other type of intervention. So that is something we can look at. I think my big ask for the city council today is really to know the, really, this year, with the COVID money and our ESSR money gone, this is the impact. And it's going to be a really tight budget year for us, which we've done that in the past. I am less concerned about this year as I am next year.
I, I have a, maybe for information sakes, is there, is there a way, I'm not advocating for this, but is there a way that we could have a dollar amount that would say, if we didn't have a school system in the city of Murfreesboro? This is what the city of Murfreesboro would end up foregoing, right? But in essence, those ninety-five hundred students, or fifteen percent of the students who are in the, in the county population, would have to go somewhere else. What would the cost of that be if that all of a sudden got shifted to the county? And, and I'm not, again, I'm not advocating for that, but I think we need to have what the number is that, you know, people don't know what the value is until that value's gone. So it would be great to be able to say, look, the citizens of Murfreesboro, this is how much we're spending every single year in operational funds, debt service, capital improvement projects, that the city of Murfreesboro is funding, our taxpayer is funding. If that all went away, here's how much that burden would be shifted to, you know, to somewhere else. And that wouldn't just be, look, I'm, it wouldn't just be the county. It would be charter schools, it would be private schools, it would be homeschool. I mean, the whole ninety-five hundred students would have to go somewhere. But I think it would be good to find out what that number is.
We could look at that. I will say from historical, just historical information, if you look at, and I'm happy to send some of this to you as a council, if you look at traditionally what's happened when consolidations have taken place, it never decreases expenditures. It always requires additional personnel, and it's always a higher expense for the taxpayer. And I can send that, some of those studies to you guys, but we will work on some.
I'm not advocating for consolidation, because that's been talked about thirty years. Way before we have been here, and it'll probably be talked about way after we're here. But I, I'm just more, what's the value that we're providing that, as Austin was saying, that the city resident is, is taking all of that cost? What is that value if that, all of a sudden, the resident in Laverne is now having to pay for the nine thousand five hundred students who live inside the city of Murfreesboro? If all of a sudden that amount got spread across the county, what's that number?
Well, it's, what's your preliminary budget number? What was it?
Our preliminary budget right now is about a hundred and six, in our general purpose, about a hundred and sixteen million.
Well, generally, that's what you're talking about.
But like you said, there's an increase in all costs when you, so that one hundred and sixteen is just a baseline number. You've got, it's going to go up.
But that hundred and sixteen million does not include debt service that we've, we have. That does not include any capital improvement projects. I mean, that doesn't, there's a lot of numbers that are not in their budget that the taxpayer of Murfreesboro has either picked up or, I mean, I think the only, there are three schools that we still have debt overall, Salem. And don't, we have a little bit on John Pittard, or did we get that, is that paid off?
Overall, great.
That might be paid off.
I think it's overall Salem are the two that we, that we still have debt. And that's about fifty, fifty, sixty million on those two. So I mean, just the debt service on those two projects alone, you know, conservative numbers, your ten or eleven million dollars a year just in, in debt service.
Darren, can we get Channel Three to do a story on this? Because, yes, we've talked about this in multiple city council meetings, and these are public and on TV and stuff like that. But you talk around to the average citizen, they have no idea this is going on. And like Austin said earlier, they're robbing the city taxpayers to pay for this, and it is not right. I mean, the county should be taking a task over this.
Well, they want to jump up and down, say, we didn't raise taxes, but you kind of did, because you're putting it on us to where, and I'll ask you, Aaron, you know, if he was three million in the hole right now, today, if they'd been more aggressive with this, what would we be looking at? Assuming a penny is, what, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? We'd be looking at a four or five cent property tax increase to alleviate this, should this continue?
Yeah, based on last year's numbers, I don't have updated information for this year from the assessor, but last year's numbers, a penny equated to about seven hundred and fifty thousand. I don't think that would change much this year since we didn't have a reassessment. So yeah, I mean, a three million, you know, three cents would be, what, two and a quarter? So maybe looking around four cents.
Okay.
I think, I think.
We'll definitely work on that, and I'll see if I can pull together numbers.
I do, I do think it's good to publicly say, I don't think that the county commissioners are doing anything nefarious. I think they're trying to find a way to fund their school with the things that, the same issues that, that everybody's having. I, I truly believe, going back years ago, I think they're, when they did this, there was absolutely some intent to hurt the city school system when they, when, when this was brought about. I don't think that was brought about at the county commission level, but I have no doubt that when this was brought about of moving these pennies around, it was that this is easy, easy money that we can get, and we're going to get it. And that's, that was sort of started a trend to be able just to allow that to happen, because, you know, I, I think it is a good point that the average city resident doesn't understand what moving pennies means. You know, it's easy just to say, look, we're moving pennies, so we're not having to raise taxes. But I, I don't want us to come away from this saying that, you know, we think the county commissioners are doing something that intentionally hurt the city of Murfreesboro. I don't think that's it. I think what they're trying to do is find a way that they can budget their, balance their budget the best they can. But I, I agree, it, it's hurting. I mean, think about this, our county is a hundred, or just say four hundred thousand residents. Hundred and seventy-some thousand of those residents live inside the city of Murfreesboro. I think the number's fifty-two or fifty-three percent of the overall property tax that's generated for the entire Rutherford County is generated inside the city of Murfreesboro. Fifty-four, fifty-five percent, that was the last number it used to be of sales tax generated in this county, is generated inside the city of Murfreesboro. So I, I would hope that every time we build a road, that new commercial developments go on, the Trader Joe's that just opened this morning, half of the sales tax number that goes, goes to the county schools and the, the county. So we're in this all together, and we got to get away from this moving to hurt one particular organization.
All those.
Yeah, Bill.
Well, let me give just a little bit more history, just having been around long enough. Where, where this kind of started, guys, was when the county had a capital project. That same percentage figure got given to us, and they always thought that they were getting, we were stealing money from them to do a capital project at the county level. So I think this is what generated this thought of how we can do this. So, but I, I, two things, I want to commend Dr. Duke and his staff for the process. We've started the budget process there, and let me tell you, I, I don't know that I've ever seen an organization have a budget process that could be any more effective than what they do. They also, they solicit ideas from principals and from teachers and from parents and from the other staff and administration to what, what can we do, what should we do? And then prioritize those, what needs to be done. And, you know, so they're moving in a direction that's responsible to have, to present to us a legitimate budget, given the revenue streams that they, they deal with now. Every year, we've added to fund balance, right? So, so that, that shows you a little bit about how operate, how it's operating, when you can find money at the end of your budget to contribute to fund balance. But the, the, the process that I think is helping people, the deliberative and the funding bodies, like the city council and the county commission, have a heads-up as to the implications of the decisions they're making, because they are limited to the resources and the streams of resources that they can have. So one of the conversations the other night with the school board was to bring those county commissioners that you mentioned, Austin, to a county, to our, to become aware of this. Not with the assumption that they were doing something to hurt the city, but to be aware of what this is. So I think that's a good move, to help them understand the implications of the decisions they're making. I think we've co-opted another advocate, you understand, the council understands this issue. I'm not so sure when it was first brought up. I heard different things presented and a different rationale for different positions. So I think information. So I think information is the first way to go for, towards this. Don't necessarily assume the worst or that we're going to create an adversary, but realize that we are joined at the hip. The city system and the county system are joined at the hip regardless. And we help them, the existence to relieve ninety-five hundred students from their responsibility, but we also have the responsibility to find the resources to educate them. The property tax in its, in its origins was, the funding of education was designed to help fund education in the communities. And fourteen point nine percent of those, that money should go to us. And so it's a fairness issue. And I think if we present this as a fairness issue, not as somebody trying to, you know, take two cents out of a, of a dollar. Concentrate, inform, let the public become more informed about this as well. And then, you know, move forward so that we don't get to the point of not this year's budget. Because I think you said we could handle this year's budget with the surplus, twenty-two million, something like that?
Yeah, right, we'll be right at closer to nineteen. So we have enough, like I said, we feel like we could handle if there was a, now, when you, the council sees our budget, you're going to see us going into reserves like we've never gone before. That's, I think, probably the big thing I want the council to know. So yes, we can absorb that this year, we cannot continue to absorb that.
You can't go into reserves forever. This is a one-time deal.
And you might look, I mean, when we get to the budget and you finally see the document that the school board approves, the things that they were talking about the other night as far as cutting are things that are really important. We're not talking about, well, let's just have another teacher here and another wing over here. These are significant programs that make public education possible in our community. These are, we're just about at the bone in many of these issues as they look at this. And they're not looking for bells and whistles. They're looking to do an effective job with the resources that they have. And they've a proven record of doing this effectively. So I love the relationship that the city system and the city council has, I really value that. But we just need to bring the commission into this circle of responsibility and stop, you know, it just can't, we can't continue as a community to be adversaries. We've got to see that we're working together, and to, and that's where efficiencies are going to be found. Because what they're doing, as we look at, they're, and I love, I wish the federal government would think about this. They're using a scalpel and not a hatchet to find, to cut down the, you know, the cost of providing services to our citizens. They are definitely using a scalpel. And I think we can work together and move forward and have a sustainable system that is doing public, of public education at the county and at the city. But I think the tack we ought to probably take going forward, at least let's try this. Can you see that this is a fairness issue? And give them enough information to see this as a fairness issue and see if that doesn't work. It may not, I don't know.
We've done that the past couple of years. We've said this is a fairness issue, and they are taking a scalpel of the county budget, but they're taking a hatchet to our school budget. So yes, they're scalping their own, but they're hatcheting ours. And so this has been going on for three years, and we've tried to handle it with finesse and ease and friendliness. And now they just hit us up again, and now we're almost at the point of no return. So it's to the point where we've gone on for three years the nice way. Now we've got to do something a little bit more aggressive because, and like I said, the average taxpayer has no idea this is going. You're just talking about moving pennies, what's a penny or what's a couple of pennies? They have no idea. And so there needs to be some kind of a public address to say, this is what's going on. This is how it's hurting the city of Murfreesboro, and this is what they're doing to us.
I agree, the state law needs to change.
State law needs to change.
It can't happen again. But in the short term, to Bill's point, education or fairness. And Darren, I just got to ask you one more question. It would be possible just to kind of look back over the last four or five years and get an idea of, I mentioned the Beatty property. I'm sure we helped them out with the transfer station. I'm sure there's numerous road projects, you know. We try to be a good partner and a good neighbor because citizens of Murfreesboro are also county taxpayers and county citizens. But when you keep taking two pennies and three pennies, you're putting pressure on us unduly. And it's not fair, and it's just not right. You could just have that, to Bill's point, from an educational standpoint. Because maybe those ten or eleven county commissioners that actually are in the city of Murfreesboro, maybe they need to be aware of this, this is the problem that this is creating. And I know they're under a lot of pressure to, you know, but it's just not right.
And Dr. Duke, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, we'll do.
My last question, Dr. Duke. With our city budget right now, if, you know, when we get to the lowest of the low, we will be able to operate six months about with our revenue. If something happens, well, we can continue just for six months. With your revenue, and I know you said this is really the last year you all can scrape anything hardly. So how many months are, what's the time limit that you could operate on your budget?
Because we've done a good job, I think, of building that fund balance, we have it. We, we are in a position where we could continue. I think my big concern is going on over the next few years. Even if expenses don't increase, you're going to see about a three percent drop in our fund balance every year. So this year, we dropped to thirteen point five percent, next year, we're right over maybe ten point five. Now all of a sudden, we're under ten, and that's with no new expenditures. With expenditures not increasing.
Yeah, years ago, you know, the city council, we did deficit budgeting where we would budget into fund balance. And we would, this was back when we were predominantly all variable rate debt as well, that we would budget three and a half percent, and the debt was, the interest rate was one and a half percent. So we saved that. But, you know, it's not sustainable to budget into your fund balance every year. I mean, maybe every once in a while where you know you're going to have large capital projects or something that you need to do, but you can't continually do that. And I want to say too, I think the Murfreesboro city school system is the best value we have in Murfreesboro. I mean, for what y'all do and the services you provide, I'm not advocating at all, talking about consolidation or shutting down our school system. We know what that value is, and to what Bill was saying, we need to be able to share to the residents in the county what the value that the city of Murfreesboro provides by educating ninety-five hundred students. And, you know, my guess is if you compare our student population to other areas in the county, I would imagine we have a higher ESL number. I would imagine we have a higher disadvantaged student number that we educate. So those are all things that, you know, we need to be able to share our story outside of moving pennies about, look, this is what we do that you would have to do if we were not stepping in the gap to do that. And hopefully rational minds will look at that and say, okay, yeah, we need, we need to figure out to be, what's the best? I think truly what's happening is, saying that when your, when your house is on fire, you don't argue with your neighbor how much the garden hose is going to cost. And, you know, I think that's sort of a little bit what's happening right now is there's everyone's, I don't say their house is on fire, but everyone is dealing with these, these funding issues, and we're arguing how much the garden hose costs when really the kid and the student is what we need to be focused on, not where the money's flowing and how it's not flowing. So if you'll keep us updated, Darren, I think you've got some information that you're going to get. And Trey, maybe you'll get some information for us. And then hopefully we can, between the two school boards, it may be a good talk, and the county commission and the city council, and there may be some good dialogue that we were able to have.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's move to electronic message center sign ordinance update. Susan McGannon would be proud right now.
Good afternoon, that's a tough one to follow. I'm Teresa Stevens, the sign administrator for Murfreesboro. We're bringing before you today the bottoms for discussion. I wanted to introduce an amendment to the sign orders that would allow second floor signs in zones that haven't typically been allowed, and to also discuss electronic message center signs. On the next agenda, the next city council agenda, there'll be an amendment for second floor signs. Typically, these haven't been allowed in our G D O, G D O, one, two, three, and four zones, or P U Ds. We've looked at this for a while, and the need is there to have these on the second floor. Signs on the building front of the second floor multi-tenant building will be allowed under this proposal. One sign per second floor tenant that has at least twenty linear feet of exterior tenant wall along the building. That's, we did that to reduce clutter, to make sure that signs look uniform on the second floor. Because we do have some smaller offices on second floor buildings that we wouldn't want sign after sign after sign. The maximum height, letter height would be thirty inches, one and a half square feet per linear foot. So if you had twenty linear feet of storefront, you could have a thirty-five square foot sign. Limited to the second story of a commercial multi-tenant building, an illumination should, will be pushed through style lighting, much like you see in the G D O area already. And then these are some examples of the type of signs that would be allowed and what it's going to look like on a second floor. You can see, this is from the avenue here, and that's, we kind of fashioned it after the avenue. The avenue has a thirty inch height restriction as well as only allowing either illumination, what we call halo illumination, or just the front of the sign can be illuminated. Do y'all have any questions on that? The second item that we wanted to discuss was electronic message center signs. It's a sign that displays text, images, and other information electronically, and can be updated remotely or automatically. Electronic message center signs are currently not allowed in the city of Murfreesboro. Some things that we wanted to ask ourselves were time, place, and manner. As a city, where do we hope to see these electronic message centers if we do want them? Are electronic message center type signs appropriate for government and school facilities? And this may include residential zoning. Can they fit in the surrounding areas of our institutional group assemblies? And this also may include residential zoning. Institutional group assemblies are your boys and girls club, churches, those types of organizations. And then what is the maximum size and height we would like to see? And how often should our messages be allowed to change? And aesthetically, we believe like a masonry base or monument sign would be the most attractive in keeping with the current Murfreesboro design standards that are currently, that are in place now. I tried to provide a few examples of what an electronic sign may look like. This one on the left is probably what we're not envisioning because it's a little bit tall and it's, has quite a bit of signage on it. You can see that the sign's illuminated. I really wanted to give that so you all would know the technology's there for these types of signs. So when we, when we look at what we want as a city, I just want to be clear that there, it's, the technology's almost endless at this point. Sign face area in height. Signs too high in overall height may be distracting and cause glare into adjacent businesses and homes. Signs too low to the ground may not be visible until a vehicle is directly upon the sign and not effective for relaying a message. Currently, for a freestanding wall sign, we allow an overall height of sixteen feet. These are the types of signs you see along Medical Center Parkway. In other areas, we allow signs up to twenty-five feet in height. And I've provided some examples to kind of give you an idea of what a sixteen tall sign would look like. This is more like, Grace Point is more in keeping with what are, we believe would be appropriate for Murfreesboro. I know a big concern is about light that E M Cs will produce. An E M C sign is, are mostly produced by LED technology. LED can produce significantly more brightness than traditional signs. Over-illuminating by setting them to maximum brightness on a sign can lead to excessive light and potentially impact night vision. With E M C signs, there is much discussion about ambient light. Ambient light is the general light that illuminates a space, creating a comfortable and inviting atmosphere. An E M C can be equipped with an A L S or ambient light sensor. This is a photo detector that measures the amount of light that is projected and adjusts to the environment it's around. Keeping the E M C height and square foot managed will help reduce glare from the signs and be in keeping with our current guidelines. Focusing on keeping the message simple, incorporate contrast colors, having static messages, and a clean font selection will help keep light issues to a minimum. The timing and manner in which a transition from message to message occurs can create aesthetically pleasing E M C as well. We would recommend an eight-second change. This is not something we just came up with, this is sign industry standard for when signs are allowed to change. And we kind of looked around other communities with a similar population, and we found that it just varies from community to community. Some communities allow types of signs for schools, churches, and city facilities only, while others require a planned development approval. And nearly all the communities we looked at have some kind of illumination controls, such as the A L S sensors. Some communities allow motion to display information while others require static display. This is just a quick overview of the communities that we looked at. And you can see there's quite a bit of varying in size and how they can be illuminated. In looking at that, we wanted to see if there was any communities that had said, you know, if only we'd known. And so we looked at these different communities, and I kept it to the surrounding communities in our area specifically because those are the areas that are going to have the knowledge of our community feedback and what their citizens have been happy or not happy about. Smyrna is the only one that really had some issues come up with scrolling signs, and they kept their gasped signs probably too small. And do y'all have any questions? I was going to turn this over to Chad Durkey. He has some information about airport signs.
Teresa, I got the opportunity a little while ago to participate in one of the meetings with Greg and Kevin and Teresa and legal department regarding the signs because we were needing to replace the sign out front at Memorial here for the airport. And given all the different, four or five different companies that we have out here, and then the various events, and so wanted, I really appreciate the complexity once you start talking about signs. And so trying to fit the airport sign, and we talked with our customers about some sort of sign that just listed all of the different companies out here. And it was going to be a kind of a mess and not very legible for Memorial. So we, we started to talk about the LED and how that might be sufficient here. And, and one of the ideas that we had was to incorporate the LED in the middle of the, of the sign and try to always have the background similar to the, to the color of the sign. And, and that would give us the opportunity to advertise our businesses, events, and even community meetings that would be occurring out here. And the thought there too, not to be changing these on a regular basis, but if they were up all day, a twenty-four hour period, that wouldn't be a problem. One of the other thoughts that came to mind was that at our Tennessee airports conference, we had some representatives from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and then an airport manager from East Tennessee when Hurricane Helene came through. And they found all of a sudden that they went from normal operations to a major emergency situation. And they became the general aviation airports, considering all the roads were taken out. The general aviation airports became. The general aviation airports became the hub for a lot of disaster relief. And there's other things that, for example, that could be used for such a sign at the airport or at other locations around the city where we could incorporate not just messages about business or events, but if we had some sort of situation. This room, for example, is tied to our city TV and would be a press conference. When the tornado hit, all of a sudden, we were the press conference area for the governor. FEMA and TEMA and other groups, all of a sudden, were descending in here. So, to me, that was just a way of this, these signs could be used. And the thing that I liked was that it would allow for QR codes to be used, different fonts, different sizes, things like that, that regular signage doesn't allow. So, that was just an opportunity that we had as we, as we move forward to possibly use LED. If you had any questions, I'd be glad to take it at this time.
Any questions? Just good information. No one here remembers the big billboard. Remember that? Is everybody on council at that time? Okay. Just ask Adam about that.
Ask David about it.
I think, I think the ask, well, this was for information to provide you. And really, I think the, the manner in which we wanted to frame it is to see what our neighbors are doing and let you see the standards that they have. And we asked Kevin to go back and ask if there was any lessons learned. If you had to go do it again, would you do it differently? It looks like that Smyrna may have had just a couple of minor things. But for the most part, everybody did not seem to have much changes. But I think we know that at least two, the Brentwood and Franklin area, they do not allow the EMCs. So, this was really triggered by the airport sign. Allowing with as much activity, you all have seen this. There's so much activity that goes on in this, at this airport now. Even if there was the ability to just change the sign and notify folks of what the event's happening here at the business center. But by doing that, we opened up a can. You know, do we just limit it to public facilities? Do we limit it to public facility, including schools? Do we then get into the churches? Then, do we allow commercial? Because the technology is getting better and the pricing of it is getting cheaper. So, it's more affordable for these commercial entities to purchase these type signs. So, we're just looking for general direction from you all on where we need to head next. And if we want to put a stationary sign out here for the airport, that's absolutely what we can do. But with that opportunity presented and understanding it cracks the door on these other areas and these other public slash private.
Can we, can we just do gas station sign? Like, you know, it makes sense to let people do electronic gas station signs so they're not out there, you know, changing the numbers. And you don't have to worry about like the storms that we've had coming through, the numbers blowing off. But can you just do gas station signs and then do? Guarantee Trust used to have one that was a time and
Date, it was the time?
Weather, yeah. But, I mean, just after reading through this, the only thing I think you have to concern, be concerned, there's some smaller towns that I'm from that you go through. And, you know, every Sonic has a huge sign that's constantly rotating. And then, you know, people will rent portable signs that, and so, we end up getting this ordinance in place that is almost impossible for our people to regulate. I mean, are we going to go out, have a sign inspector go out with a stopwatch and start regulating? Okay, is it eight seconds? Is it 10 seconds? So, those are just the tough things that the council will need to talk about, that we don't want to look like Broad Street already looking like Las Vegas Strip going down and start, people start putting signs up.
I agree with you, Mayor. We, I've reached out to Joe and Legal. I think we're going to look into the other communities of what, what we can and can't allow. Can we only do the digital gas prices? That's one thing that we get a big ask on. I think that, that would be easy to do. And I think every gas station needs that. It's easier. And they're going out, right now, they're going out manually, changing the signs, which, you know, that doesn't look that great either on some of those, so.
It's job security for somebody.
It is job security. But it's kind of what Mr. Gore said also, you know, where do we want to draw the line? Because you could open a can of worms up, so.
Because I don't mind, I don't, I don't mind the gas station. And I don't mind what you said about maybe the date and the time. Is there a way that maybe we just limit it to a height, a vertical height of eight inches? Or, or is there like a small number to where it's effective for gas prices and for small signs, but no one can come put a big?
Yeah. I think we can look at that for sure. Well, I think there's, there's, there's ways we can do what we need to do. I think overall, we're just looking as a, as a group, because we're rewriting the sign ordinance right now. So, this would be the time to incorporate that change. So, we were just trying to get the temperature overall, kind of what, which way do we need to move? And then, we can come back and present more information to you guys.
I, I think, and two, for me, it's probably no scrolling and no changing. Like, I almost just think it needs to be a, not permanent. I don't know what the, the term would be, but.
So, the idea would be to have a static sign. And we would have, just have to determine if we want it changed once every 24 hours or when, when that can change. Because people will want it to change. Once every 24 hours is also used in some, some areas, some communities. Eight seconds is the sign industry standard, just because of like, if you're sitting at a red light, that's about how long, or it's about how long it takes to read a message.
That sounds effective for advertising, but I don't think we want advertising on these signs.
I don't, I mean.
It's not, I don't.
It becomes difficult to enforce.
We need, we also need, there's some significant, because I, we were, Adam brought this all on. We were in a lawsuit with Lamar when they, if I remember. And Jamie, we had a lot of discussions back then about time and place and gas electronic readers. And then, it got into, well, you can't have one and not allow everything. And then, you can't limit height because then you're, so, we may need a pretty detailed legal explanation of what we can and can't, can't do.
We'd be happy to, be happy to provide that. And we have the start of that, but I don't, I don't want to get into that right now.
Yeah, I think it's a lot more, I think it's a lot more detailed than, I'm sure y'all have thought about that, but.
Well, what I'm hearing is minimal. There's a, or just not allow the LED changeable signs that are on a very frequent basis, but the static signs and allowing gas station pricing to, to change through an EMC would be appropriate. Very.
Yeah, I'm fine with like the gas price. I want a sign above it that says two-for-one Marlboro Lights in bright red.
I'm 99, Bud wants.
Other communities limit it to just city facilities. So, there's, you know, again, it gets into these discussions.
Not to get him to say that, Jamie.
Were you at last night's meeting?
So, and then, there's other communities that only do the digital gas prices. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. That's why we're repelling illegal, but just kind of wanted you to be aware of this, this change.
Point made, gentlemen. Point made.
Throw in a little other opinion, because the airport sign, to me, is a golden opportunity to help our community understand what happens here. And I don't know, I don't know what's the happy medium, how we're going to split the baby to make this work. But I, I think that to have that sign, because it's a limited area and the location that we're, that we've got to put that sign is pretty limited. And it's an opportunity for us to give some exposures to all the things that happen here. So, I don't know if there's a way to do this, to balance this. I hate to say, I'm worried about this, so we're not going to do this. I'd like to see if there's some way we could, whether it's limited to public buildings, you know, maybe, maybe that's the way to look at it. But at least that's where I'm leaning now. If that, I mean, I, it's four votes, but, but I'm leaning to say and have a little bit of a window so that we could have something unique for our airport that could actually be helpful to exposing the community what, to what this is, this place offers.
We're not looking to vote today, are we?
No, no, no. This is only just, we're just talking about it.
Because I think we need a little bit more information. I think we got to look at what other communities are doing. And then, before we pull the trigger, to make sure we're doing the right thing.
I think it'd be good for everyone also to talk with Adam and revisit. Maybe I'm the only one that has PTSD from when we went through, talking about electronic signs back.
Oh, I remember.
It was probably, got wrapped up around 2014 or so.
Yeah. It was a, it was a very litigious conversation. So, maybe if y'all can give us some updates of what we can and can't do, what we can regulate, what we can regulate. Because at the time, I remember, we were talking about putting restrictions and there was case law that where these sign companies were suing municipalities on, basically, it was either one or the other. You could do it or you couldn't do it. But you couldn't regulate what you can and, because of freedom of speech got involved. And there was all kinds of things that, you know, remember, we had the discussion of flags and can you regulate flags as being commercial signage? And there was a group that sued that says the, said the United States flag was commercial signage and just stuff that makes no sense.
Right. And, I mean, just very, very generally, there's the time, place, and manner principles, which if they're reasonable and applied, not in a non-discriminatory fashion, they're constitutional. But then, you have, when you get into measures that are discriminating between speakers or the content of the speech, it's, it becomes much more difficult. But one of the easier places to carve things to separate is the distinction between commercial and non-commercial speech.
So, maybe we do a very conservative option. And then, maybe, I wouldn't call it a more liberal option, but maybe a less conservative option that have a couple of options to come back and look, look at, you know, a side-by-side comparison.
Sounds good. All right. Listen, thank y'all. Chad, this is your fault.
When are we voting on the first part, Teresa? The second story sign ordinance?
Next week, City Council.
Next Thursday? Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move to water and sewer rate design review.
Good afternoon. Y'all are doing okay. And I'll try and make mine a little more brief. Pushing 1 o'clock. Bear with me, this is the first time I'm presenting our rate design. Jitters. We are recommending rate increases proposed with, along with last year's rate design, which was also based on our cost of study from FY '23. All our data and projections will be updated with the new cost of service study that we're doing this year and which will include an FY '30 pro forma. We believe we take a conservative approach to budgeting our operations and reserves. This slide is just meant to put in here to show you one of the reasons why we are proposing a rate increase is we are expected to incur about $120 million worth of debt over the next five years. That is cherry lane corridor, biosolage processing equipment, which is our dryer, and the WRF, hopefully, WRF expansion. And I want to give you a glimpse also of our reserves. We have, we, as council is aware, costs continue to increase on capital projects. And we update these numbers regularly. We continue to use reserves where we can and, but we don't go below our secured minimum balance, which is twelve months of operating expenses. Our annual billing continues to grow, water not as much as sewer. Water is growing at a slower rate because of our consolidated utility district boundary around our water service area. And as you can see on the top line, the sewer is growing more rapidly because we do serve consolidated utility district customers with sewer. This slide is just to represent water consumption growth. And it has stayed fairly even across each class. You can see we've got the classes here, wholesale water, government, industrial, large commercial, small commercial, and residential water consumption. It's gone, I've got a steady growth, around 3.6% growth over the last five years. Proposed water minimum monthly bill increase per meter size. It varies as your meter gets larger, the increase in the difference raises. We anticipate a, an added revenue by changing the residential meter. This is just based on residential customers. Changing the increase of 25 cents per meter and commodity rate of 5 cents, we anticipate a $330,000 worth of additional revenue.
And that's the meter, not the piping? It's the actual size of the?
It's on your meter size, yes. As far as sewer, again, it is growing at a faster rate. It's, even though it has stayed fairly even across each class, but it does continue to grow. And here is a glimpse of the sewer, sewer minimum monthly increase. Again, the residential portion is 25 cents. And these are based on meter sizes, even though sewer. And our commodity rate is staying the same. And we anticipate about $853,000 increase in revenue. And both water and sewer combined would be about 1.18 million. So, this is, just kind of gives you a summary of the residential rate design from '25 to '29. This year, we are going up from last year just 25 cents. Our commodity charge on water is increasing by 5 cents. And as you can see, we've kind of left FY '29 the same as FY '28. And, and on the sewer side, again, 25 cents, the commodity charge is not changing. And, but we're not changing any, any rates for FY '29 shown on this chart because we will reset all of that based on our '25 cost of service study. The next two slides are, you've seen from last year. Just keeping with this, our combined monthly residential bill this, this year will be $70.23. That's the minimum without any water usage. And then, also, this slide shows the reason why we are going with an increase or proposing an increase is to make sure that we can recover our costs and not, and not under-recover. And see, if, if we don't raise rates by the time we get to 2028, we will be under-recovering both on water and sewer. And that'll be it. Any questions?
Any questions for Valerie? All right. Thank you, Valerie. You want to move to solid waste?
Okay, that'll be me, fair. I will take the next three items and again, kind of be, go through these. I don't want to go through them too quick. But real, on the solid waste plan, I want to spend the first five or six slides just kind of going over the, some of the history that we've had with the solid waste fee and the solid wa, the coordination we've had with the county. So, in 2018, and I think Mr. Wade, Councilman Wade, Mayor McFarland, you were on this solid waste advisory commission. There was a vision document that was created with GBB as the consultant. That was used as a foundation for the city of Murfreesboro's 10-year plan. Our latest update was in 2018. That was used as a foundation for the city of Murfreesboro's 10-year plan. Our latest update was in 2023. Didn't update it last year because there was a little city manager thing happening and this year hope to plan on updating again for 2025. But, um, it's been very, it's very unique how these things have really dovetailed together. The, the vision document in 2018 talked about a north and south transfer station. What you all understand, what we have currently through the 10-year plan is we have the north transfer station that the county is building in 2025 and the south transfer station that the city has under design right now that we're hoping to have complete in 2027. These are kind of the pictures. You can see where they are. The Rutherford County transfer station is probably going to be operational this summer or fall. We're looking at potentially bidding the south transfer station off Butler Drive side around later this summer or fall. Also, in the vision document, it envisioned a mixed waste processing facility in 2030. With refuse derived fuel. Our 10-year plan, we, we did talk about a material recovery silly facility. I put 20 question mark, question mark, because not sure that, you know, we looked at the waste away option. That did not. The project works, but again, finding a 55 to 60 million dollar investor did not coalesce, but there's still an opportunity, I think, for a mixed waste processing facility or a material recovery facility at the north or the south site. So that's kind of, and so when we've talked about next steps, we had the joint conference with, with the county. We were talking about reestablishing that solid waste advisory commission and talking about how the city and the county would, with two operable transfer stations, how those, what type of interlocal agreement we may have in operating those and utilizing each other's, leveraging each other's asset. Or going in and talking about a full solid waste authority for Rutherford County. Again, those are to be determined and I think a future solid waste advisory commission may be, may be where we're headed to determine next steps. So, real quick, Middle Point, Rutherford County, this is some other data we, we pulled together. Talking about how much tonnage Rutherford County, this is from 2022. Bishop Wagner's got me some updated numbers, but I, I, I think those are only through 2024 or maybe 2023. But this is pretty good representation that 477,000 tons generated in Rutherford County. About 60% of that goes to Middle Point. You can see there's a lot of other landfills even going to Kentucky that Rutherford County trash goes to. So of that 287,000 tons that stay at Middle Point. There's 40, you know, almost 47,000 that was Murfreesboro that is, you know, free tipping and I've got those numbers reversed. 32,000 from Rutherford County is free. That's for the the 10%. And then, so there's 207,000 that is generated in the county that is presumably charged. You know, it's from commercial businesses and others. But I thought that was interesting. So 190,000 tons of trash did not go to Middle Point that was generated in, in Rutherford County. This is a real quick, I'm trying to keep abreast of the regional landfill, remaining airspace and expected life. They have not published the 2024 engineering reports at this time, so back to 2023. Interesting to note that rather that Middle Point showed six years remaining in 2022 and 6.4 in 2023. Obviously, they control the incoming trash and how much, how much trash can fill that airspace. So by controlling that throttle, if you will. Theoretically, they could extend that life. I think that's part of the conversations. If it was a Rutherford County only landfill, there would be much more life to it if that trash was stopped coming in from other outside of region, primarily Davidson. So projected trends, and this is kind of where we get into the, some of the, the fees that we've talked about year after year. You can see that municipal solid waste generated the blue line and kind of see, we, we jumped around a little bit over the last five years. From 2020 to, we actually dropped almost 2,500 tons between 2023, 2024. But our population says that but we, we generate about 600 pounds per person per year, 1,500 pounds per residence. And the trend says we're going to be about 54,000 tons, 54,200 in 2030. We are adding about 196 gallon garbage carts per month. You can kind of see though at this end, I noticed this, it's, this is kind of tailing off a little bit. Not quite in line with the, with the linear trend. And this is where we are on the fee. We're currently at 1150. And that's our current solid waste fee and we think we're recovering about 75% of our expenses. We're asking this year to go 1350 per month for the residential fee, 45 for the commercial, which is a $5 increase. The city core overlay would stay at the $30 per cart fee. And the reason that recovery drops a little bit is we are adding, we are expecting some of that new debt service potentially on the transfer station as we start to build that. As always, as we've had in the 10-year plan for the last five years. We have anticipated that the, even though Middle Point says it's going to close in six and a half years or from 2023, so four and a half years, we've always kind of anticipated that they would close by mid 2027. So it jumps up even to a further recovery when we start talking, I'm sorry, I think I've got that in seven, may have missed that 72%. When we start actually having to pay for a tipping fee to haul it and dispose of it at another landfill. So that's kind of the, where we're at on the, um, the recommendation. Again, this is just for information only. We'll be coming to you later with the resolution. We are anticipating this revenue increase in the budget as an additional one, about 1.5 to 1.6 million dollar revenue increase to the city's general fund. Last slide, just so everybody kind of sees it right now, just so you understand the breakdown. Right now. It, it really costs us $18 to just come pick up your, the garbage curbside to cover our current costs. It would be $18 a month. So you can see at 1350, that's where we're at that 70 some odd percent. When we have to start dealing with the disposal of the $80 per ton, that's going to add about $7 more. So that's where we get to that 25 number. So any, you know, now with inflation and with another five, four or five years, that number may go to 26 or 27. But the disposal costs of taking it to another landfill are not the majority of the costs we're dealing with. The majority of the costs we're dealing with, almost two to one, really over two to one is picking it up at the. And this is where recycling, when we talk about curbside recycling, why it's very difficult to justify from, I mean, we can do it. But it's going to cost more for us to pick it up curbside, even if we get free, even if we get an absolutely free discharge and somebody takes it. And we don't have to put it in the landfill and it's a $0 net, net revenue, net expense issue. It's still going to cost, if we pick it up on a weekly basis, it'll cost the same. If we did it once, once every other week, then maybe, you know, we'd be more in that $9. But it's going to, it's going to be a cost to, to curbside recycle. So that's really it. Just wanted to go over that with y'all. Again, information only. We'll be coming with the resolution on the solid waste fee increase later.
Hey, just to make sure though, before our good neighbor to the north takes this slide and pushes it out anonymously to a bunch of people in our community saying that their trash fees are going to go up to $33 a month or someone from outside of our community who says they pay a trash fee comes in and says that they're pay, our trash is going up. This is not something that we will vote on, on a yearly basis as things change. We're not saying the citizens of Murfreesboro that their trash fee is going up to $33 a month. You know, that's our, that's our, we're, there's a lot of factors that are going to be in this discussion and decisions before we go up on anything, just like what we're talking about right now.
Correct. I, I would not recommend going over $18 a month. Until the middle point is, I mean, that's just to recover our curbside pickup. So I wouldn't go over any, I would not recommend anything over that until we understand the fate of, of Middle Point landfill.
I, I say that because many of us have seen publicly where representatives of, of the landfill have said that the city of Murfreesboro solid waste fee is going up to $33 and I've not heard any council member make that comment that that's the direction that we're going. So. And I do live in the city of Murfreesboro, by the way. You can verify my voter record if you'd like.
Didn't, it'd be a very different headline.
Right. I'm just, it was a sarcastic joke about making.
Don't live in the city of Murfreesboro that come and make statements.
Heard such things, but all right, let's move to stormwater fee.
Stormwater fee review, real quick. This is the first time we've really broached this topic. We've had the stormwater fee in place for 18 years. It's been at $3.25 per residential, per month. We not, we have not raised at one time. You can see that it's been a very consistent linear trend since the fund has been in place. We're adding about $73,200, $250 per year. And that's simply based on growth. That represents about, what did I put in my memo? Is that about 150 acres of imperviousness added to the city per year? The fee is based on impervious surface. So what has happened over the past, say, eight years or seven years is we have maintained a fund balance of around 4 million. So what's basically been coming in from, from the revenue? We've been expensing it to not only inspection from the engineering department, street sweeping, drainage activities. We've done some moderate, I think the Constantine box culvert was just funded. 300,000, 300 or 280, something like that. I'm looking at Michelle. So we have been able to do some good drainage projects, neighborhood drainage projects and some, some nice. Even some water quality improvements with impervious pavers. We're doing a 374, well, jumping ahead. Where we're at, we've got these projects that I've highlighted in green. The old Fort Ballfield, old Fort Park Ballfield renovation, we know we've got a $374,000 participation coming up. The big one that really is moving the needle and has prompted us to have this presentation and inform the council is the Town Creek Conveyance. We're looking at about a 2, 2.25 million dollar participation in that project. And there's a mall circle drive drainage renovation that Mr. Griffith informed me. So with, when I saw those three projects happening that quickly and knowing we only had about a $4 million reserve. Our policy says that we cannot go below three months of operating expenses for the stormwater fund. That's around $800,000. If we spend this money over the next two years with only a $73,000 increase expected, we will violate that. We will not be able to stay above that threshold. So having said that. There's ways around that. We've always, part of our financial policies, we could remove that basement threshold to say we can let the fund balance go to, go to zero. Or we can allow the stormwater fund or the, the take on debt service. Which is another, we would have to change the financial policy of stormwater fund as currently it says, it will not take on debt service. What we're proposing, and I should have had another slide in here. Is to go ahead and finally put, look at it going from $3.25 per month to $3.50 per month this next year. That's 25 cents. It is about a 7% increase, just seven and a half. That would, that would increase our revenue from that 73,000 to around, I'm estimating about $340,000 per year. And then in next, next budget year, FY27, we would go to three and a half dollars. And that again would increase at about $350,000 per year, which would only put about 700,000 roughly into our fund balance. But again, um, start looking at making these incremental increases over time because we, we will not be able to maintain the fund balance per our financial policies by when we start funding these larger projects. So again, when you look at the total here, we've got a 9.3 million dollar five-year CIP, which we will not be able to do all those projects, but we, we keep a running, we, we keep, we can push those and prioritize them as the funds come available and, and kind of cherry pick which ones are the highest priority at the time. But I like getting them all on the sheet. Just so you all know, we are working hard to identify areas of, of improvement with regards to stormwater. So that really is it. I just, again, not asking for you all to, to, to vote on this today, but I wanted to give you this information as a primer for the request.
All right, let's move to general fund payroll slippage impact on pro forma.
Okay, last, last one real quick. This, this should be fairly, uh, this is kind of a, a repeat or a reminder or reinforcement, if you will, of our October retreat that we had in Manchester. We, we looked at a 2026 to 2033, kind of an eight-year pro forma that dealt with multiple revenue sources and savings sources and, and what we saw as increased, increasing expenses and new debt service. But going to our headcount, uh, increase by department by year. You all know this is the primary driver of, of the city's expenses are our people. And we are talking about 326 new employees from FY26 to FY33. It's a 28% increase in public safety. So we're going to, to 885 from 692 and in the general fund, we're looking at about an 18% increase or 572 from currently 484. So what this presentation is really about is payroll. And what happens if we have unfilled positions or if we have fully, if we fill all of our vacant positions? When we talked in October, we made a assumption. Historically, we've had a seven and a half percent slippage, which is a significant savings. We knew with our new pay plan for fire, police and the general fund. We made an assumption that that was going to, we were going to see about a two and a half percent payroll slippage. That means basically if we had 1,000 employees, we were only, we were going to have, what's the math on that? Yeah. Do the math real quick. Two, only two and a half, you know, two, 25 people less. So yeah, 975 people. And we do, when we, when we get these positions approved, there is some slack timing. There's time by the time we, if it's approved, by the time we advertise and onboard and get them in. We always have a little bit of payroll savings. But what we talked about in, in October, if we had a two and a half percent payroll slippage. That was going to amount to about a 8.8 million dollar deficit over this eight-year timeframe. Divide that by 750,000, which is the per penny. That equals almost 12 cents over that eight-year timeframe, which is about a one and a half pennies per, cents per year on the property tax. With current projections. If we played the, the sensitivity analysis of, of, okay, and that's, that 35 million is that, is the savings that we're talking about, is the payroll slippage at, at two and a half percent. Now, remember, this is over an eight-year timeframe. If we go to one and a half percent. That slippage turns into 20, about 20.5 million, which is a 14 and a half million dollar loss, if you will. So if we have a one and a half percent payroll slippage. Pro forma says we need a 31 cent tax increase over the next eight years, which is about four cents per year. Now to play the other side of the coin, if we have three and a half percent payroll slippage, which is to the good, you can see, again, we got, we have about a 14 and a half million dollar gain. And it shows that we really wouldn't need a, a property tax increase over the next eight years. All of this being said is that with our budget this year, we have asked everybody to budget, zero budgeting. Try to cut it down to the bone because we've pulled so, I say, we've pulled so many levers on the payroll machine, if you will, with, with, that we. with, with, that we don't know exactly where we're going to land on this slippage. We want to let things settle. We want to see how it falls out. Have another discussion with you all at our October retreat about the pro forma. Erin is now thoroughly invested and engaged in the pro forma. She's making it, she's got access to so much. I tell everybody that my pro forma was like the kid using the big crayons to color. And now Erin's got the, she's going to break out the artist brush and fine tune it. So we have another, and we talk about this slippage and we try to, you know, what, what do we really see on a, on a revenue gained, savings gained versus expenses? And what does that look like over the next eight years? Again, so we're not asking you to make a decision, but I wanted you all to be informed that, that our, our eight-year pro forma is highly sensitive to whether we retain employees or not. So that's really all we've got on that. I'm available for questions if you got any.
All right, let's move to CIP transfers.
This is just information only for you all. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. No vote or anything is needed.
Let's move to January, February dashboard. Any questions for Erin? All right, seeing that, we'll move to board and commission appointments. I don't think we have any. Beer permits? We have a revocation?
Yes, we have one to revoke a beer permit at the last council meeting. Council approved a beer permit application pending final building and codes approvals. After that meeting, it was determined that the applicant was not eligible or did not meet our requirements per city code. So we recommend that council revoke that previous approval and the applicant is aware of this.
Motion to revoke.
Just a second, please call the room.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And we also have five permits for your approval today. One is for a new restaurant located at 2450 Old Fort Parkway. We have an ownership change of a restaurant located at 2333 Memorial Boulevard, a new catering site at 2476 Old Fort Parkway, an ownership change of a restaurant located at 124A Wendellwood Drive Suite A, and a new lounge located at 630 Northwest Broad Street. These applicants have met our requirements, so we recommend for approval pending final building and codes inspections.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. I have nothing to do with the 2450 one, but I'm doing the renovation project on that. So I'm going to abstain from the 2450 Old Fort Parkway.
So do you want to vote on them individually or?
How about I just abstain from all of them?
Okay, that's fine with me. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Did you mean?
I'm sorry, abstain.
I should have called you. That was my fault.
I was looking at the next thing. Abstain. Any statements to be paid?
Yes, sir.
Any other business from staff? Any other business from the council?
We all, I'll go give Jim Carrey a big hug for what he did with T-Dot and all that. So Jim, you'll just stick around after, after this, we'll give you all a big group hug.
Yeah, for those of you all who haven't seen the public related, the, the statements that Mike Browning and his team sent out. Jim and his team secured from T-Dot on the 2031 plan. I know that sounds a long ways away, but that's not a long ways away in T-Dot years. The, we secured additional funding for the Cherry Lane 840 interchange and also for the Highway 96, Old Fort Parkway widening project. So that's a big deal. So Jim, thank you to your team for working so hard on that. And we need to have about a 10-minute executive session. So when we adjourn this meeting, we will immediately go into executive session. And we're going to do that in Chad's office. Since Chad brought up electronic signs, we have a vacant, we have a vacant office in the airport now. So we'll stay in adjourn.